To our constituents and people that are in the room, if you would like to sit down, we have an overflow room at the cafeteria on the fifth floor if you would like to go up there. So for those in the hallway or anything like that. Streaming. They'll be streaming from there as well, I guess. We apologize that we're going to be starting a little bit late. We're having some technology difficulties. For those that are interested, streaming is down on the Omaha website, but you can go to tknomaha.org to stream the meeting as well. Well, obviously. Moving on. Pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statutes, the next meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001 and the Board of Educational Service Unit Number 19 will be held on Monday, April 2nd, 2018 at 6:30 PM in the board meeting room of the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cummings Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 841412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the board meeting room on the north wall. We have invited, we have a special guest, PAC 86, Thayen, Brendan, Seth, and Vincent that are going to lead, and Hutch, that is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Can you guys join us? And please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Earlier today, I had the opportunity to meet these fine young men, and they are OPS students, and they're excited, and it was just a great opportunity to meet with them today.
Can we give them a round of applause?
Can we give them a round of applause, please? Dr. Holman will lead us in the OPS vision and mission statement.
Every student, every day, prepare for success. Omaha Public Schools prepares all students to excel in college, career, and life.
Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Cassidy.
Here.
Gotti.
Present.
Holman.
Present.
America. Pearlman.
Here.
Ryan. Scanlon.
Present.
Smith. Snow.
Here.
Six present.
Ms. America, Ms. Ryan, and Mr. Smith indicated, because they had prior work conflicts, that they will not be able to attend tonight's meeting. I will entertain a motion to excuse them from tonight's meeting.
Sound moved. Sound moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Holman, second by Ms. Cassidy. Roll call.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Six aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to school spotlight with Monique Farmer.
Can you hear me now? Okay. Good. Tonight, our OPS Proud Spotlight is on Burke and Central High Schools. Students from both schools earned notable recognitions at the Metro Conference Swim Meet, and Burke coach, Richard Hood, was honored with the Metro Conference Lifetime Achievement Award. Burke High Junior Elizabeth Richardson placed first in the 200-meter individual medley and the 100-meter backstroke. Her 100-meter backstroke set a new Metro Conference record and ranks fourth in all-time Nebraska swimming history. Burke students Jacob Frisby, Gavin Graybill, Cody Hollingsworth, and Hayden Robbins, along with Central students Mac O'Brien, Maggie Germampre, and Jessie Ferguson, were named to the Metro All Academic Team. Students must maintain a 3.6 GPA and qualify for state to be on the team. Additionally, Burke students Gavin Graybill, Alex Jones, Betsy Foy, Katie Gunderson, and Kathleen Kirschenbaum were all named Academic All-Americans by the National Swimming Coaches Association. To qualify for that, students must be a senior, a varsity swimming team member, and maintain a 3.75 cumulative GPA. Lastly, the Burke Girls Varsity Swim Team was recognized by the National Interscholastic Swimming Coaches Association as an All-American Scholar Team with a team average cumulative GPA of 3.7. Also here with us tonight are Burke High School Principal Gay Lannan, coaches Pat DeBase and Richard Hood, and Central High coaches Kristoff Burzens and Brendan Smith. Congratulations to all students and staff, and at this time, I would invite our Central High School administrative representatives, as well as our Burke High School administrative representatives, to the podium.
Sorry, we don't want to, I want to introduce my athletic director here, Jason Williams, but I'm honored to be standing here in front of you and representing the Burke High School student athletes, as well as I want to congratulate the Central High student athletes. I think they're a very strong example of coming up with coaches that not only focus on what they do in the pool, but what they do in the classroom, and again, representing Burke and Central very well, as well as the Omaha Public Schools.
And I just wanted to pay recognition to Coach Hood and Coach DeBase, who have over 60 years of experience at the varsity level, as well as our student athletes and our parents who have made this thing possible. So we're very proud of them. Thank you.
Would the students, please come to the podium and tell us about your experience? All of you guys. There we go.
All right. I'm Gavin Graybill.
Also, please tell us what event you participated in.
Okay. I'm a senior at Burke High School. I swam the 500-yard freestyle and the 100-yard backstroke at state, as well as the 200-yard freestyle relay and the 400-yard freestyle relay. And I'd just like to thank all my OPS teachers over the years at Columbia Elementary, Beveridge Middle, and now Burke High School, and a special thanks to my coach, Rich Hood, and RJ Lubbert.
My name is Hayden Robbins, and I'm a senior at Burke. And at state, I participated in the medley relay, 200 free relay, and 400 free relay, and the 100 free individually. I would like to thank my coach, Richard Hood, for making me be such a fine young man.
My name is Jacob Frisby, and I swam the 200 medley relay, the 200 freestyle relay, and the 50 free at state. And I would like to thank my parents and my coaches. Thank you.
I'm Alex Jones. I'm a senior at Burke, and at state, I participated in the 100 free, 50 free, 200 free relay, and 400 free relay. And I just want to thank Rich Hood for all the opportunities and experiences.
I'm Cody Hollingsworth. I'm a junior at Burke. At state, I swam the 200 medley, the 200 IM, the 100 backstroke, and the 400 freestyle relay. I wanted to thank Rich, RJ, and my teachers at Burke. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Betsy Foy, and at state, I swam the 100 breaststroke and the 200 medley relay. And I guess I would like to thank Pat DeBase and my parents. Thank you.
I'm Elizabeth Richardson. I swam the 100 back, 200 IM, 400 free relay, and the 200 free relay. I'd like to thank Pat and my parents.
Hi, I'm Katie Gunderson. I swim the 500 and the 200. I'd like to thank my parents, Pat, and the team.
Hi, I'm Jessie Ferguson. I swam the 100 fly, 100 back, 400 free relay, and the 200 free relay. And overall, I'd just like to thank Central Swimming as a whole and my parents.
Hello, I'm Kathleen Kirschenbaum, a senior at Burke High School. And I would like to thank my coach, Pat, and my parents, and all the wonderful teachers I've had my 13 years at OPS. And I swam the 200 freestyle and the 500 freestyle.
I'm Mac O'Brien, junior at Central. I dove, and I want to thank my coach and the team and my parents, I guess.
Can we have the coaches come up as well, please? Coaches, please? There we go.
I'm Rich Hood, and I just want to say thank you for all the kids I've ever coached. They are awesome. They're amazing.
My name's Kristoff Burzens, fifth year at Central as a teacher and a coach, and honestly, this is one of the greatest experiences I could ever have. And it's a real pleasure to see what amazing swimmers and scholar athletes we have here in OPS.
Hi, I'm Brendan Smith. This is my third year at Omaha Central, and my third year as a swim coach there. And I just want to thank OPS for giving me the opportunity to work with the kids, and I've had a great time doing it. It's a real passion of mine, and I'm looking forward to many more years of service. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Pat DeBase, the coach at, girls' coach at Burke. This is my first year in the OPS system. I've been in a private school for several years, and I can't tell you how impressed I am with the students and the support we get at the school, and I'm just very happy to be there.
Thank you. Everybody stay up there. So we have a comment or a question by Elaine Gotti.
Well, I just want to recognize you all. You all were able to get to state. What people in the audience may not know is that you can only swim two individual events and two relays at state. So some of these kids may have been qualified in more than one event, or more than two, but they have to pick, their coaches have to pick, which two they're going to swim, and then which relays they're going to swim. So I want to just recognize how talented they are. But second, how many of you were able to go on to the second day? First day is that preliminary day. How many of you were able, raise your hands, to go on to the second day? Awesome. And I know that the Burke guys all had, you all medaled, right? You all finished with the relay in third place? Was it the 400? 200 free, right? So, very good. And Jessie Ferguson from Central actually placed at state all four years that she has been a student in OPS, which I think is pretty cool. That's a pretty impressive finish. And I'm not sure about Elizabeth. Have you, you placed this year very, very well. And I don't know about past years, but I know that I've watched many of you swim club and also at the high school level, and it's just a great honor to have you here. Thank you for your dedication. Thank you to your coaches and to Coach Hood. It was, it was just really exciting at Metro when he received the Lifetime Achievement Award. And the comments that were made about not only his role with students, teaching them to swim, but the role that you've played for so many students, and I know students that you had 25 years ago who would still say to me, "He was like a father figure and really taught me how to be a young man." And so I just want to thank you for dedicating that time to OPS and forgiving of yourself to allow our students to just receive that blessing. So, thank you all for being here.
If you guys could please, we'll go around, shake every board member's hand, and we'll take a group photo for the district website. Thank you.
Are you nervous, Elizabeth?
Yeah.
Do you get nervous in front of people?
Yeah.
That's it. That was amazing.
Okay, everybody look at me. Are you ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Okay, everybody look at me. Are you ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Okay, everybody look at me. Ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Perfect. Okay, everybody look at me. Are you ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Perfect. I think so. Yes. Okay, you guys are good.
I just want to add to the comments that I had. I forgot to say that we only have one dive team for the whole district. And so it's rather small, but Mac O'Brien was one of our students who made it to state as a diver. The divers all practice out at Burke because it's the only place we can go. So I just want to acknowledge the divers who commit to the district because we don't have a whole lot of space for them to be, and they all have to drive to Burke after school. So, thank you to our divers, too.
Also, thank you to the parents, because you guys are a key factor in this again. So, thank you guys so much for supporting your students in OPS. Moving on to item G, Board and Superintendent Communications. Onto the treasurer's report.
I'd like to submit for your review the February financial statements, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Seeing none. Moving on to Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to recognize our incoming superintendent, Dr. Cheryl Logan, is here with us tonight. Obviously, not official till July 1, but we appreciate her involvement, and thanks for being here tonight. We have several activities, including principals' meetings this week, that she'll be participating in, and I know she's got a full agenda of groups that she's meeting with. So, we appreciate that opportunity to get a leg up. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we are, we are working with a political action committee. I say "we're working with." We can't actively, as a board and as a superintendent, I can't work with an advocacy group, but I can share information with them in reference to our bond issue in 2015, or May 15. And I just wanted the community to know that we understand that our schools are overcrowded, and this board has stepped up to that, to that initiative, and that is moving forward, and you'll hear more about it in the future, but I wanted everyone in the audience to know that. Second thing I wanted to share is that we do have a budget advisory committee that includes, I know we have some representatives from SEIU that serve on that. I see some of our representatives. They're meeting this week to continue looking at where we're, where we will come up with and make recommendations to the school board on recommendations to meet part of our ARC, which is the payment to the OSERS pension plan. So, this committee, I wanted everyone in the audience to know that there's a group of district leaders, community members, SEIU, teachers' union, community members, principals, a large group that meets regularly, and we're now down to a spot where we're actually looking at specific areas that they're going to be making some recommendations to our school board. Hopefully, by May of this year, we'll have some recommendations to the school board, and I know the school board's probably going to have, my guess is, some workshops where they also walk through what the community group and this budget advisory group brings to them. So I wanted just to remind our audience, whether it's on TV or internet, wherever that's at, and also to our audience here tonight, that we are working at that. We recognize that there's a shortfall, that our investment returns have not given us the opportunity to meet all the expectations. So we're looking at a shortfall that's approximately 18 million in our OSERS pension, but we are going to do it in a way that's thoughtful, in a way that allows a lot of input from all the impacted groups. So, just an update for the board and for the community. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Mr. Pearlman?
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Just want to report, over the weekend, I had an opportunity to, along with Lacey America, to be in Washington DC for the Council of Great City Schools. It was a legislative conference, and it's a group, a gathering of the largest 100 school.
Any other board comments? Mrs. Gotti?
I was honored or humbly honored to be able to serve on a roundtable discussion on Friday afternoon with Senator Fisher and about 10 to 12 other people from around the state to discuss mental health and school safety issues. And it was quite a, it was a very good conversation and just to kind of bring her up to speed on some different issues. And so, you can read more about it on her website if you'd like to and who all was there. It was an impressive group of individuals and I'm really thankful that I got to be a part of that and represent, and be the school board representative that was a part of that discussion.
Any other comments? Well, thank you guys for your dedication to the Omaha Public School Board and OPS. Our next item on the agenda is public comment. The next item on the agenda is public comment. We have 15 speakers who have submitted request to speak forms. The board has adopted policy 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That same policy limits speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit. Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute remaining, when you have 30 seconds remaining. If you are in need of interpreter, please let Mr. Ray know and one will be provided for you. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you not mention the student or staff member by name and instead provide that, information to Mr. Ray. He will insist us into looking into those types of details for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit any written commentary, please provide it to Mr. Ray. We make sure that each board member gets a copy. As a reminder, we ask that you please spell your name and state your address before you begin your public comment. Now, I'm, we have 15 speakers and we're going to try to fit everyone in within that hour. So, when I do announce your name, I will announce the person that will be right behind you. So, if you are behind that next individual, if you could start getting ready, so we can get everybody in within that one hour time limit. It is now 7:03 and our first speaker is-
Point of order. Can I just ask a question? Would it be possible to have a motion to have three minutes?
No.
All right.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, it's, it's really our conversation. So, I guess, I don't feel inclined to extend beyond an hour, so I'm just giving the opportunity for the board to kind of know where I'm at on this.
So, there's a motion on the floor to extend-
There's, there's a motion. I would propose a motion to, to suspend the rules for the polit, policy number-
8346.
8346, to have three minutes of public comment versus five minutes of public comment.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
All righty. Mr. Scanlon.
I think that that will, again, allow more people to speak because myself, I'm not in favor of extending it past an hour. Excuse me. We have had the discussion that we are having a meeting in public and we have to make sure that we get to the agenda items that we have talked about and we need to have discussion with those. And having an extended public comment kind of detracts from, from those items.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. Anyone else? Mr. Pearlman?
Well, with, with 15 people speaking at five minutes each, I believe that would put us over by 15 minutes, so I'll be voting against it.
Anyone else?
Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Mr. Snow.
No.
Cassidy.
No.
Gotti?
Aye.
Hallman?
No.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Too high.
Motion fails. If you guys could refrain from applause, that will help us get through this. So, I'm trying to fit everybody in, so if you could please, thank you. Our first speaker is Lori Conrad and up next, after Lori, is Crystal Prince. So, if Lori Conrad can make it to the podium, it is now 7:06 and it's starting that. And if Crystal Prince can get ready as well to come up right after that. And just because you have five minutes, you can, you don't have to-
Lori Conrad, L-A-U-R-I-E-C-O-N-R-A-D. Is that all you need?
Your address.
Yes. I would like to say that I'm here with the union to oppose this change that you are doing because it's detrimental to all of us and it's going to affect the students. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Up next is Crystal Prince. Crystal Prince, up next since, all right, moving on. Next speaker is Lucinda Perez. Please state your name, spell your last name and your address, please.
L-U-C-I-N-D-A-P-E-R-E-Z, 7006, 7006 North 65th Ave, Omaha, Nebraska. We need our 12 months paychecks because all the pares, bus drivers, custodial staff, everybody needs 12 months paychecks. Because what's happening, you guys are talking about cutting us to the point where we may not even get our benefits and this is going to affect all of us. And the Christmas break, well, we only get a half of a paycheck and no paychecks in the summertime. This is ridiculous. How do we power, how are we supposed to budget our bills? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Up next is Beverly Taylor. And after Beverly Taylor, we have Katrina Jacobberger.
Beverly Taylor, 5526 James Street. That's J-A-Y-N-E-S Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68104. First thing is, you know, we sit here, we talk about the kids. We talk about the parents and what the parents are doing, but we forget that we have to talk about the people that make it happen. That's us. You know, everybody likes change. I may change my wig today from blonde to black. I'm not saying that's possible. Everybody likes change. But when you ask them to see these kids that you saw stand up here today, these parents need the money to make sure their kids can stand up here. These kids are giving you 3.7 in GPA. These workers are giving you 100% of them. 12 months. We, you know, we've been doing it for over 30 years. The money you guys take from us is really our money, so you get to keep it and you can even invest in it and probably get interest off of it. We're just saying, something's a change. But if something is not broke, your car's not wrecked, your refrigerator's still working, don't fix it. It's best to have people that are happy working for you. And everybody know what I mean. When someone's happy doing what they're doing, whether it's to dance or doing hair or whatever, they do better work. You get better respect out of people when you give people something back, even if it's a bone. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Up next is Katrina Jacobberger. After Katrina is Eddie Ventura.
Hey there. I'm Katrina Jacobberger. It's J-A-C-O-B-B-E-R-G-E-R. I'm at 7610 North 33rd Street in Omaha. I wear a couple of different hats in this district, but tonight I stand before you as a single parent of two students in the Omaha Public Schools. And I'm here to talk to you about two things, privilege and community. I've learned that our school district wants to end the current practice, in place for no less than 30 years, of withholding a portion of the 10-month support staff pay to be distributed over the remaining two months of the year, effectively leaving these staff members without an income for two months. Now, I've heard the argument that they'll be still earning the same aggregate amount of money, so they should be able to budget for those two months. That claim is as tone deaf as let them eat cake. This is where a quick discussion on privilege comes into play. It might be easy to think that those people should budget when your take-home pay is quadruple the amount they take home each month. When you have, when you have a savings account that you are able to deposit money into every month instead of having to pull some out, and when the expenses that you should have every month are always less than the amount that you make, so you never have to decide what not to pay or how you're going to make it with only $60 a week for groceries this month for your family of five because those breaks had to be fixed. Making a decision like this comes from a place of privilege. No question. It's not a place of malice, but it's ignorance of the reality of the situation because it's not a situation that you've ever been faced with. 10-month employees feed my children. They clean their classrooms. They greet them at the school door and they are an integral part of my family's community. And in this community of the Omaha Public Schools, we care about people. If the people who feed my children five days a week cannot rely on a steady, consistent source of income all year, they will need additional summer employment and maybe they will find that employment somewhere where they're treated with a little humanity. Why would they come back in August? Don't you do that to my kids. If the night crew that tidies the classrooms has to find a different gig every June, knowing that they have to leave and go back to work in August, who's going to hire them summer after summer? Don't you do that to our kids. If the para, who is responsible for my son's EpiPen, when our school nurse is in the other building, because you know, we don't have enough, can't afford to make it all summer and just goes full-time at her other job because, well, she doesn't get to work with kids, but the benefits are better and there's no one trained to administer that EpiPen in that life-saving medication when he actually needs it, don't you dare do that to my kids. If OPS discontinues current practice, we will lose quality employees, the 10-month support staff in this district who are invaluable to the daily experience of not just my children, but to each of the 52,881 students enrolled in this district. And when it comes down to it, this is about them and their education. Not facilitating the writing of an easy budget, in this community, we care about people and support staff are people, not line items.
Up next is Eddie Ventura. After Eddie is Janice Heckard.
Edward T. Ventura Jr., E-D-W-A-R-D-V-E-N-T-U-R-A, 2811 Bryan Avenue, Valby, Nebraska, 68005. I'm reading this for a paraprofessional in my building. She is not able to attend since she is working her second job. Her worries, huge concerns on how the proposed pay schedule will affect many aspects of their lives. Based on the 10-month pay schedule, will they be considered full-time or part-time employees? How is the pay schedule going to affect their health coverage? If they will be considered part-time, do they lose their health coverage? For those months in which they do not get paid, do they qualify for unemployment benefits? Is it already a hard, it is already a hardship to budget on their current pay. She has to work two jobs to cover her minimal expenses as well as raise her daughter. When it comes down to it, she has three jobs. How does this institution expect people to get by on the proposed schedule? On another note, though, I'd like to also speak on, I'd like to thank the Chandler View Elementary staff for their nearly $300 contribution to the NSCA Children's Fund. Staff who contributed were allowed to wear jeans with our school spirit shirt. The Nebraska State Education Association members recognize that many students in our schools are struggling. Some live without the basic necessities of food, clothing and shelter despite the availability of social assistance programs. The NSCA established the Children's Fund to fulfill modest and immediate needs of these students, students encountered daily by NSCA members in their workplaces. Supported by donations, the Children's Fund makes funds available to NSCA members who might otherwise reach into their own pocket to buy a warm coat or new pair of shoes. In some cases, the fund supplements other sources of assistance and cooperates with merchants to help a child with a more complex problem. The fund works to ensure that the physical, social and emotional needs of students do not stand in the way, their way of a success in schools. I challenge the school board, the superintendent, building leadership and Omaha Public School staff to offer a Jeans Day if they contribute to the NSCA Children's Fund. Thank you.
Up next is Janice Heckard. After Janice, it is Bill Kurtz.
Hi, my name is Janice Heckard. It's J-A-N-I-S-H-E-C-K-A-R-D at 6404 Forest Lawn Avenue. I wanted to also comment on what he said, on the pay. How can you ask us to, you want to shorten our pay to 10 months, but like he said, how are we supposed to pay insurance? Oh, I know, you're going to take more money out during the 10 months. Oh, that'll help us because we'll have less money even more. And then, again, we can't get unemployment for two months. How are we supposed to survive during Christmas break? Do you guys get paid during Christmas break? Do you get paid during spring break? Well, how are we supposed to survive with no money and no pay? We have kids. We have homes. We have cars. We need food. Well, we can call all those people and tell them that we don't get paid till the next month. I'm sure they'll listen to that. Also, insurance. What are we going to do for our insurance? We can't afford to pay extra during the 10 months, so we'll have insurance two months. Or should we go without medicine for two months? Should we go without going to the doctor for two months? There's no explanation for that. And how are we supposed to do all this with such short notice? Do you want us all to go out and get another jobs? Oh, wait, I can't. I already worked three. Thank you.
Up next is Bill Kurtz. After Bill, it is Kathy Polling.
Bill Kurtz, K-U-R-T-Z, 8203 North 30th Street. I'm a bus driver for OPS Transportation. I have a question about sick pay compensation. It appears that something has changed in the way it's paid. I have, I don't, I don't miss work. I'm there every day. I take sick pay when I have a time schedule that allows me, when I don't have students for that period of time, I'll take a half a sick day so that I might be able to go to the doctor, go to the dentist. And yet, when I look at my paycheck, I'm deducted for a half a day of sick day when I've only lost two hours of work time. So, in essence, I'm losing a benefit of that half a day sick day. I'm only getting two hours of paid time because I'm still working my extra five and a half hours for the rest of the day. I just, I've talked to the office payroll department. They didn't have an answer for me. I called down here to the tech building. I couldn't get an answer from them. I just would like clarification. I don't know who to talk to. Maybe this isn't the venue, but I thought I needed to say something. Thank you.
Mr. Kurtz is-
Charles.
No, it's not. Mr. Ray, if you can get your complaint or issue to Mr. Ray and he will look into it. Mr. Ray is right there.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Kathy Polling. After Kathy is Lori Thompson.
My name is Kathy-
I wanted to also comment on what he said, on the pay. How can you ask us to, you want to shorten our pay to ten months, but like he said, how are we supposed to pay insurance? Oh, I know, you're going to take more money out during the ten months. Well, that'll help us, because we'll have less money even more. And then, again, we can't get unemployment for two months. How are we supposed to survive during Christmas break? Do you guys get paid during Christmas break? Do you get paid during spring break? Well, how are we supposed to survive with no money and no pay? We have kids, we have homes, we have cars, we need food. Well, we can call all those people and tell them that we don't get paid till the next month. I'm sure they'll listen to that. Also, insurance. What are we going to do for our insurance? We can't afford to pay extra during the ten months, so we'll have insurance two months? Or should we go without medicine for two months? Should we go without going to the doctor for two months? There's no explanation for that. And how are we supposed to do all this with such short notice? Do you want us all to go out and get another jobs? Oh, wait, I can't. I already worked three. Thank you.
Up next is Bill Kurtz. After Bill, it is Kathy Poling.
Bill Kurtz, K-U-R-T-Z, 8203 North 30th Street. I'm a bus driver for OPS Transportation. I have a question about sick pay compensation. It appears that something has changed in the way it's paid. I have, I don't, I don't miss work. I'm there every day. I take sick pay when I have a time schedule that allows me, when I don't have students for that period of time, I'll take a half a sick day, so I might be able to go to the doctor, go to the dentist. And yet, when I look at my paycheck, I'm deducted for a half a day of sick day, when I've only lost two hours of work time. So in essence, I'm losing a benefit of that half a day sick day. I'm only getting two hours of paid time, because I'm still working my extra five-and-a-half hours for the rest of the day. I just, I've talked to the office payroll department. They didn't have an answer for me. I called down here to the tech building. I couldn't get an answer from them. I just would like clarification. I don't know who to talk to. Maybe this isn't the venue, but I thought I needed to say something. Thank you.
Mr. Kurtz is...
Charles.
No, it's not. Mr. Ray, if you can get your complaint or issue to Mr. Ray, and he will look into it. Mr. Ray is right there.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Kathy Poling. After Kathy is Lori Thompson.
My name is Kathy Poling, K-A-T-H-Y-P-O-E-H-L-I-N-G. My address is 8135 South 50th Circle. I'm here because I am currently a teacher, but I haven't always been a teacher. I was once a para who worked for Omaha Public Schools. I worked as a para for eight years until I became a teacher. My husband is a custodian. My son is a custodian for OPS also. And I'm here to support all those people who, to support me in the job that I do. I could not teach the students at OPS without the staff that cleans my classroom, feeds my students, and makes sure that whatever I need done gets done. Many of the support staff that we have working at OPS make poverty-level income. Many of the people that I work with qualify for food stamps. Many, many of these employees, including paras, make less than twenty thousand dollars a year. I know, because I was a para. I know how difficult it was to budget on one thousand dollars a month, because that's what my take-home pay was. I know that every one of these employees lives paycheck to paycheck, because I have been there. I want to challenge all of you to go home and think about a budget that you would write on twenty thousand dollars a year. It's not easy. So I'm asking you, instead of cutting their pay from twelve months a year to ten months a year, let them continue with their twelve months. Let them continue getting their bills paid the way they have managed right now. I'm also asking you, as OPS, we are a community, and I know when I came to OPS, people took me in and treated me as family. I'm asking you to do this for our support staff. It's what they deserve, and it's what they need. And so, I am asking for you to support our support staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Lori Thompson. After Lori, Susie Anderson.
Lori Thompson, L-O-R-R-I-E-T-H-O-M-P-S-O-N, 14453 Brown Street. Average pay for support staff is around twelve dollars an hour. Starting pay is ten ninety-nine, if you're brand-new to the district. If the job is not identified as full-time, there are no benefits, no, no days, no professional development. We are the teacher and the administrative staff's right-hand. All the jobs they don't want to do, or don't have time to do, we do. Living on this income is challenging enough. Most of us have two jobs, if not more. I was told that a member of your staff suggested finance and budgeting classes for ten-month employees, who will no longer receive checks in the summer and at Christmas. I would say a comment like that was thoughtless and rude, but definitely not helpful. How long do you think that you could get by on a thousand dollars a month? Can you raise a family on this income? What if you are a single parent? What if you incurred huge life-saving medical bills? Last year, my medical bills, twenty-eight thousand dollars. When am I going to pay those off? Many of us have worked with students as they grow up and take on jobs and families of their own. Many of the students are attached to us as we provide support. People retire from these jobs, and they come back and sub after retirement. This is a faithful staff that you have built. You are not treating them with respect. You know as well as many of us do, there's no discussion or agreement of this change, and then, out of the clear blue, we get a flyer telling us, this is how things are going to be done. The reason we negotiate contracts is to prevent this random rule-changing, so we feel safe and secure in our position. Certainly, you are aware that trying to rush this through over spring break, when many are unavailable, was about as low as you could go. We need to be respected. Our jobs are certainly not glamorous, and I often hear people say, oh, she's just a para. This is not an accurate description of these jobs. You need us, and we need you. We count on you treating us fairly. We should not have to fight for fair treatment. Over four hundred people called in today to tell you, we do not want this change. Please listen. They are dependable, hard-working, dedicated people.
Thank you. Up next is Susie Anderson. After Susie, it's Dewana Herron.
Hi, my name is Susie Anderson, A-N-D-E-R-S-O-N. I live at 6560 North 33rd Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68112. I believe earlier today, this afternoon, I had sent an email to all the board members. I hope you received it. It is this PowerPoint. It talks about just what everybody just got up here and talked about. I don't know if there's much more I can add to that, other than I think it's ridiculous, I think it's unfair, I think you're, you're just setting our district up to even fail worse than what it is. I mean, over the past few years, we have gone from, I'd say probably an A-plus down to a D-minus. And if, if you're employees, the only thing a public school has as an asset is their employees. We are the most loyal people you will ever meet, because when you ask us, what do you do? Oh, I'm just a para. I'm just a custodian. I'm just a bus driver. I'm just this. I'm food service. We say it like we're just this, because you know what? We get up every morning, and the only reason we come to work, it's not because of you guys, it's because of our kids. There's nothing to do with you. And I'll tell you what, all I ever get preached at in meetings all the time is, it's for the kids, it's for the kids. Really? I'm not only the union president of SEIE Local 226, I'm a taxpayer, I'm a parent, I'm an employee, and I've been around this district forever. If I didn't love this district, if we didn't love this district, you wouldn't have all these people standing here and be out in that room. We've tried to tell you, this ain't going to work. It ain't going to work. And we want our district back. And I want a good district to start. I do not want Dr. Logan to come in here on August 1st and not have any employees to work with. That ain't fair to us, and that's not fair to her. Thank you.
Up next is Dewana Herron. After Dewana, it is Robert Miller.
My name is Dewana Herron, D-E-W-A-N-N-A, last name Herron, H-E-R-R-O-N. My address is 3775 Curtis Avenue, which is the home of the Bobcats. That's my home. I'm there from sunup to sundown. I can't count of the days that I'm at, at my school until after seven, or eight, or nine o'clock, doing what I need to do. I started off as a student for OPS, a parent, a grandparent. I have invested twenty-three years with this district, and my thing is, I've given my all. I went back for the No Child Left Behind. I even dealt with the snow days thing that went on this year. How can you tell me, first of all, you're going to get this amount of snow days, but you have to take it like this? And if you don't, then we're going to make you take it like this. Okay, well, I'm not sick, and I can get to work, because I don't stay far out. How come I can't go to work? Oh, that's not an option. Okay, I, I need to know why not? If you're telling me that this is what's going on, then I should have the option to choose what's best for me. So if it's best for me to come to work on that snow day, that should be my choice, because remember, designated staff is in the building. So the building is open. That should be my option. Also, I would like to say, as well as other people that I've talked to, I've made friends with people because of what's trying to happen with us. You know, that's the best thing I could see coming out of it. You know, truth be told, like I said, I get recognition from my school, I understand that, but we don't get a thank-you card from the district when we're twenty-three years. We don't get any of that. But guess what? We still come back, because it's for the love of our children. And some of you people, you know, some, my first time seeing you now, some, you've been inside my building. You know, you know what it's like. You know, you could sit here in the tech building and pretend as if you don't, but you truly do. My thing is, the words we use with the children, make good choices, because if you choose not to do the right thing, you're going to choose to lose a lot of good people. And I'm speaking for me, as well as other people.
Thank you. Up next is Robert Miller. After Robert, it is Julia Tesse.
Robert Miller, it's M-I-L-L-E-R. I live at 7301 North 107th Avenue in Omaha, 68122. President Snow, OPS Board, and Mr. Evans. Good evening. Like I said, my name's Robert Miller. I'm the president of the Omaha Education Association. The need for survival comes to mind when the change in practice regarding twelve months versus ten months is looked at. This change will be, will place additional hardships to those hard-working staff who already make a low salary. The classified staff continue to work tirelessly with little compensation. By making this change, it will cause changes both inside and outside the, the classroom. It's time to show the respect these, these employees deserve. Teachers are often asked to look at things through a different lens when addressing a concern in our classroom. I ask you to look through a different lens when addressing this policy. How would you feel if this is, this was your mom, dad, or even a child having to face this policy change? I have a feeling it wouldn't set very well. I urge you to think about the results this action would cause to the families of OPS. If OPS is truly about kids, this action would make, and would say otherwise. This is hurting kids. It's not right. We need to make it right.
Thank you. Up next is Julia Tesse, and after Julia, it is Larry Store.
Good evening, President Snow, and members of the Omaha Public Schools Board of Education. For the record, my name is Julia Z, J-U-L-I-A-T-S-E, and I'm here on behalf of Voices for Children in Nebraska, which is at 7521 Main Street, Suite 103, Ralston, Nebraska, 68127. I'm going to depart a little bit from the discussion at hand today to talk a little bit about the community eligibility provision. I'm here to summarize a letter that Voices and our partners over at Nebraska Appleseed sent to this board about comments and discussions about CEP at the most recent board meeting on March 5th. First, I want to preface my comments with an expression of gratitude to leaders in OPS, especially CFO Connie Kanoki, who has been a great partner on this issue and has done a lot of hard work. OPS led the way on CEP early on in Nebraska with its CEP pilot. Still, we are concerned that the six-million-dollar loss in state aid has been misattributed to CEP, and the option requires further research and discussion. CEP allows schools to serve free breakfast and lunch without collecting meal applications. Instead, schools use data that's already collected elsewhere on student poverty. This reduces paperwork in schools and eases financial burdens for children and families. The loss of this household income application required a change in our state aid formula, and in 2016, the Nebraska Legislature passed LB 1065 with the input of officials from OPS, which was to solve this issue. And so, last June, we appeared before this board to ask them to expand CEP, which did not occur. At this meeting, we identified at least three misrepresentations about CEP, which we would like this board to consider. First was the application of a fixed current ISP, or Identified Student Percentage, of eighty-four point zero-three percent, to any new schools adopting CEP. This is not how CEP works, nor is this term ever referenced in state or federal law or regulation. Second, the CEP report to the board included incorrect calculations that also assumed district-wide adoption, which discounts other potential options. The board should instead consider strategic groupings of eligible schools with the correct calculations. And finally, the board, the report referenced poverty students in estimating the impact on federal funds. I believe that this term is only limited to our state aid formula and is never referenced in federal law, regulation, or guidance. We would also urge the board to consider new information issued by NDE, which I've attached to my written comments. Last fall, State Senator Lynn Walls of Fremont introduced a legislative interim study, LR 148, to examine CEP and state aid. The adoption of CEP in the thirty-four OPS schools analyzed would have resulted in a net gain of over two million dollars. A summary of this analysis for OPS can be found on page 12 of the enclosed report. We understand that student mobility within the pilot schools has been attributed to a decrease of four-hundred-and-fifty income applications and the subsequent decrease in state aid. Yet, identified students, which make up over eighty percent of enrollment in the pilot schools, are not required to fill out applications. These students will continue to be identified within the district's overall free count, whether or not they move out of one of the pilot schools. Therefore, we would recommend the following to avoid the momentous loss of this opportunity for thousands of OPS students. First, a thorough review of the NDE analysis. The evidence presented by NDE, the entity that certifies state aid, is compelling. We encourage the board and their Budget Advisory Committee to give weight to this analysis and seek input from the state aid director. Second, expand CEP in the district in strategic groupings of buildings. The district may recalculate its ISP to its advantage if poverty increases within certain buildings, but it is not required to do so if poverty decreases. Finally, the board must weigh other countervailing factors. This must include an accurate calculation of federal funding. The LR 148 report that shows that grouping all thirty-four schools would result in over one-hundred percent federal reimbursement for every meal served, and has the potential to underwrite the cost of forgiving meal debt in the district. I appreciate your time and consideration tonight, and thank you for your service to students in this district, and would welcome any questions or continued conversations about CEP. Thank you.
Our final speaker is Larry Store.
Larry Store, S-T-O-R-E-R, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'm here tonight for transparency, to start with. Fortunately, they've taken a lot of my steam, so I'll probably be more timid than I have been in the past. But, on the topic of transparency, tonight I can hear everything. We haven't heard much out of you people, but usually you can't hear everything. Speakers usually pretty good. But having to comment before you have your business for tonight puts me kind of in a disadvantage. I'd like to comment on what I hear tonight, but I can't, because I don't hear at all. Like, last March 5th, I believe it was, in terms of transparency and budget dollars and things, I was a little bit perturbed as a taxpayer. All of a sudden, now I'm here, seventy-six years old, and I'm having budget problems too, because of high property taxes, high federal taxes, federal programs for this, federal programs for that, state programs for this, state programs for that. I've been down to the State House quite a bit lately. I have a package of bills that I got from the State House itself. They're green, a little hard to read. I got from the State House itself. They're green, a little hard to read. But some of them had to do with child fine, which is an old term. I remember that term when my grandson was in third grade many years ago. Family fine. Saving families. Short budget shortfall state and OPS city. Now we want to go down and find three-year-olds to put into the school system. We want to hire, for each education service unit, a social worker. To do what? To find more children. To do what? For what reason? Are we reacting to the shooting at schools? 17 kids dead? Well, that's one of the kids that apparently the system failed from recent news. But I can tell you, the system hasn't worked all that good since my kids were in school and my grandson was in third grade, because there was child fine then. But nobody found him until, well, nobody found him till third grade, when things came to a head. And then because of privacy laws, certain things could be disclosed and certain things couldn't. And you would discuss certain things and you wouldn't discuss other things. That's part of the problem. You have people here that probably know the kids pretty damn good. With a little training, maybe they could be one of these people that find children. But I stood here, March 5, and I saw a guy get put on the, patted on the back for knocking on doors, going around the neighborhoods, knocking on doors, folks, to find children to bring into the system. For what? To teach them what? After all these years with child fine, does it look like the system's worked all that great? Why? Maybe too many outsiders sucking off the dollars? For example, if we're bringing three-year-olds in now, the bond issue has to pay for refurbishing some facilities for the influx of three-year-olds, don't they?
One minute.
Isn't there a better solution? Some of this is down at the State House, but some of this is through State Board of Education things, and through Buffett Foundation and other partners, other stakeholders. We're all stakeholders, but they don't think so, folks, is the point. So the shortfall's at the state, and the shortfalls are here. All of this is really not what the founding fathers intended. Local control is what the founding fathers intended. They didn't intend for you to go get federal dollars and go hire people from outside foundations to tell you what is the best practice. Those are buzzwords I've heard a lot in three years. But that is what's going on. People that have best practices are spending the money. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys, for public comment. Moving on to the consent agenda, I will now entertain a motion for the consent agenda that is before us.
President Snow?
Yes.
I needed to give Matt Ray something, and I needed to tell you one more thing. I forgot. May I present this to Matt Ray and tell you the one thing?
You can hand it to Matt Ray.
Did it take me 10 seconds to say it?
Yeah, I don't think, you won't be able to do it because you missed the time limit on that. But you can pass it to Mr. Ray.
10 seconds.
I just want you guys to know that they're going to implement this, because I got a letter today that said it.
Boo!
Boo!
Get them all off the school.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda.
I'll trade you spots.
I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Pearlman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Holman. Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Six.
Motion carries. We'll take a five-minute recess and come back at...
Five minutes.
Sure, I can get it to you right here. Sorry, I don't have a car.
We good? All right, we are 7:50, and we're going to move on to action items. J1. I believe we have update on OSERS and other legislative issues. And I'll let him, Mr. Pearlman.
Well, just briefly, there is LB 1052, and let me make sure it's pulled up. And I don't know if, for those watching at home, if that's going to be, if there's the ability to pull that up. But that is one that the district had been monitoring. But recently, we have changed our position to that of support. And so that is one material update to the policies. Other than that, I don't think there are any other changes. And so, again, for folks watching or listening at home, what page is that, Mr. Ray?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Page 17 of 22 on what we call our matrix. And so I'll just, I'll just read it briefly, beginning with a 28, this is what LB 1052 would do, beginning with a 2018, 2019 school year, unless otherwise provided in an individualized education plan for a student receiving special education services. Each student who is identified as exhibiting characteristics of dyslexia shall receive evidence-based structured literacy instruction implemented with fidelity using a multisensory approach as provided in the technical assistance document for dyslexia adopted and promulgated by the State Department of Education pursuant to the act. And a school district shall not require a student who exhibits characteristics of dyslexia to obtain a medical diagnosis to receive, and that last word is cut out, to receive intervention pursuant to the section. Essentially, it's a lot of verbiage, but what it does is provide additional support for students in Nebraska, should it pass, who are identified as having dyslexia. And so that's something that our district, along with other districts, are supporting.
Thank you. Any other comments? So because this is a new recommendation coming from the committee, we will have to vote in order for our lobbyists. So I will now entertain a motion to approve the committee's new recommendations as presented in the attached document.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mrs. Gadding. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Holman. Discussion. Mr. Scanlon?
I guess I, I'm still not, I mean, it's not in regards to this one, LB 1052. It's still in regards to the, the OSERS pension bonds. I'm still not in support of that at this time. So I guess I'd just like the record to reflect that like it did last time.
Correct. We will, because really nothing has moved on that issue, I believe, our next board meeting, we will have an update on the OSERS bill. Mrs. Gadding, did you?
They'll pretty much be wrapping up, and so whatever happens will probably happen in the next couple of weeks before we actually meet again. We're still working that bill and working to try to get to a place where we can get a more stable funding situation for OSERS. The numbers actually are not, are not good, as we know. And we believe that there's a significant amount of savings in the millions of dollars on the bonds. We're still working to provide information on that and to seek support from the legislature. It's currently in committee and has not been brought to the floor at this point.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Gadding.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Six.
Motion carries. Moving on to item J2A, committees of the board update. I know many of the committees haven't met, so we do have those dates on there, and I believe some of the committees will be meeting by time of our next meeting. So moving on to J2B, Phase 1, SEABOK 2014 Program Update. Mr. Mark Summer.
Ms. McHale.
He's wearing a suit today. Usually, he has like a pullover sweater. Thank you. I had to. I do it, too. Oh, he shaved, too. Wow. And Ms. Mary McHale as well, from SEABOK.
I'm Mary McHale, M.A.R.Y. I'm Stephen, capital H.A.L. E, and I have the privilege of serving on the superintendent's Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. As you might imagine, those of you who are familiar with me, I decided to apply for that based on my previous experience with getting something in the 2014 bond issue. And I can tell you, it's been an eye-opening experience. What I love about the committee is that it's not made up of construction people, it's not made up of designers, it's made up of regular people like me who don't understand what goes into doing all this construction and doing the projects and everything. And Jacobs has been absolutely transparent in, here's the plan, here's what we're working on. Anytime any committee member has a question about something, Jacobs, if they don't know it, they will get the answer and they'll report on it at the next meeting. The minutes of the meeting and all of the handouts are also on the OPS website. So again, everything is transparent, which I know was a criticism of a previous bond issue that OPS had. And it's really, in the beginning, those meetings, they were painful, and they were very long, because there was a lot to think about. And what Jacobs does is it boils it down and lets everybody know what's going on, and if they need to move some of the schools and do them in a different package, because it makes sense to start them and put them in the temporary schools because of what's going on with other construction in the city, they do that. And bottom line, it's about being good stewards of the money, of taxpayers' money. And it's also about making sure that what the bond said they were going to do is actually what happens with the different programs. Questions?
Any questions, comments so far? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members. Of course, Mark Summer with Jacobs, here to provide an update on Phase 1 of the bond program. Just a quick overview of the agenda. Going to touch, as I always do, on some of the financial highlights, including the economic inclusion performance. I wanted to also take a moment in the presentation to kind of underscore all the fire and life safety work that is happening in Phase 1. I know as Phase 2 was being planned or kind of formulated, there were questions about, is there still fire and life safety work to be done? What does that look like from a Phase 1 and Phase 2 perspective? So I just wanted to touch on that briefly this evening. And then I have several slides of some photos and some progress that's happened at several different locations. And then just a reminder where folks can find some additional bond program information. So just to jump right in, of course, the program is on time and on budget. It's been very successful to It's been very successful to date. No staff or student safety incidences to report. And we still have two contractor safety incidents that have occurred. Eighty-three total projects. And I, just reflecting back a little bit, putting this presentation together, I can remember when we had zero active. So, you know, we're about three and a half, four years into the Phase 1 program. And as you can see there, we have one project remaining in design, four projects that are going to be bid out over the next five to six weeks. So at the completion of those five projects, from a bid and award perspective, all the projects in Phase 1 will be let or will be in active construction. So a pretty significant milestone. And as you track those projects through kind of the lifecycle of the project, you can see that number 50 at the bottom from a complete perspective. Again, that'll continue to grow and grow as projects are finished and closed out. Quick glance at the high-level finances. Again, commitments are contract and purchase orders approved by the district. That currently totals $326 million, nearly $327 million, or about 77%, 78%. Total expenditures, again, that's actual dollars that have been issued or checks that have been written by the district, totals $278, nearly $279 million, or 66%. Of course, we still have projects that need to go out to the marketplace and be bid and bought. So we're still forecasting the need for all $421 million. Of course, we know there's some anticipation or some eagerness, if you will, to identify potential savings. And again, we've kind of echoed or discussed, once the projects are all let, again, that early summer timeframe, we might be able to get into some preliminary conversations about potential savings. The other item that we track, of course, pretty closely is the program contingency. You can see there, the original budget, which hasn't changed, of the $37.9 million, we're forecasting to use about $35.6 million of that. So still forecasting to be within the total program budget and within the contingency allotted. Phase 1 economic inclusion, of course, is significant hallmark, if you will, of the program. At a net level, you can see at the bottom there, commitments to the Tier 1 and Tier 2 small businesses, $36.9 million, nearly seven, or nearly $37 million. Again, the board target that was set was about 7%. And of course, this is nearly double that. So still seeing a lot of success engaging with the small businesses, continuing to try to be creative in the programs and the networking opportunities, of course, on really this last wave of projects that will be bid. And then on the expenditure side of that $36.9 million, 30.9 of that has been...
Mr. Scanlon.
Sure.
Okay. You're talking about the economic inclusion, and that's been great. Can you tell the public, has that cost the district any more money than it would have in market value?
No.
So, I mean, this program has not increased any costs to the district?
Correct. And in fact, from an economics perspective, it would cost the district less because you would get more coverage in the bid market. The more vendors that participate in your projects, whether they're large or small, frankly, helps increase competitive pricing across the board, which brings it down. So I don't have a dollar figure from that perspective, but we know there's more contractors involved because of this program than not. I believe there's over 80 small businesses that have been recipients of work contracted through prime contractors. And then I believe there's another eight to 10 small design firms as well. So really, on both sides, if you remember in early discussions, we wanted to try to find opportunities in the professional services and in the physical construction side. So not that all of those 80 vendors, some of them may have participated, but not nearly the volume that we've seen without the program. So again, the way we look at it is, it is a zero-cost initiative for the district, and there's really reward on the competitive coverage that it allows the prime contractors really to get, which ultimately comes to the owner.
Okay, thank you. I just want to emphasize that to the public, that this program has not cost any additional money to OPS. And it has also allowed us to expand our suppliers and those companies that we work with. So, because I would hope that the board would agree, moving forward, if a Phase 2 is approved, that we do another economic conclusion that is at no cost to the taxpayer.
Moving into, again, I mentioned in the opening a little bit about the fire and life safety, and I just wanted to provide some information regarding the fire and life safety and some of the specific types of work that's occurring. In the next few slides, you'll see all the locations that have this. And I'm not going to read every school, but ultimately, every project in Phase 1 is receiving sometime, some form of fire and life safety scope of work. Whether it's a brand-new facility where it's designed with a secure entry and card reader and all the district standards, or it's a location like Crestwood's where we've gone in and modernized the facility, added a secure entry and did card reader, or if it's a location that may have had card reader and we've added video intercom to multiple locations. So the access control system, though, is located at all the exterior doors, and it really allows for that electronic lockdown kind of feature that you hear about. The system is completely programmable, and the district has the ability to schedule for events as necessary to coordinate that with the campus and some folks in the Buildings and Grounds Department. But again, that's kind of the exterior feature. Of course, I think most folks are familiar with the video intercom. Oh, yes, sir?
I just have a question. You know, with the recent focus on, you know, these terrible tragedies and shootings in the schools, if a school goes in lockdown, how are law enforcement going to get inside?
I would have to defer to school safety or the actual folks operating the campus if that occurs.
Okay. If someone could get back to me, I'd love to know how they get inside. Thanks.
Yep. Video intercom system, of course, is a push button at the front door. It gives folks at the front desk or other locations a video image, allows you to be buzzed in and out of the campus location. And then classroom or intruder function locks. This provides the ability for classrooms to be locked from inside of the classroom versus, historically, there's a lock on the outside of the classroom. But when there is an intruder, this provides the teacher or the staff the ability to lock the classroom from the inside, so they don't have to go to the corridor to lock that. So these are just a couple of the things that are done in the fire and life safety projects. They're also incorporated, as I mentioned, into the larger renovations or new construction projects as well. Again, really, all the locations inside of the 2014 bond program are recipients of this scope of work or these types of scopes. Of course, at the middle school and the high school level. Jumping into a couple of quick updates, of course, my photos are a couple of weeks old. So if you look next door, of course, at 32nd and Burt, when you got here, when it's light, you can see a lot more work is occurring. But over the past few weeks, they've been installing what are known as geo piers. But ultimately, a large hole is created. They pour in rocks, and then they pulverize the rock. The rock creates enough friction in the ground to create bearing, and that's what they build the entire structure on. So all of the geo piers have been placed, and they're starting to put footings and foundations in for that campus there, again, right across the road. Florence, we've talked about a couple of different times. On the left-hand side, of course, you can see the new front entry. It's changed significantly, largely in part to the partnership with Boys and Girls Club at that campus. So they'll have a joint front entry. And then inside of the entry in the vestibule, you'll move into, if you're going to the school, Florence has a secure entry area that you travel into. Or if you're going into Boys and Girls Club, you go down the corridor into their entry space. In addition to the Boys and Girls Club, the existing campus is also being remodeled from a classroom perspective, windows, lighting, ceilings, et cetera. And then, of course, the restrooms are also being modernized at that location. Gilder Elementary, on the left-hand side, you can see some photos of the new media center or library, kind of rotating a bit clockwise into the new addition. The new addition is the safe area for the campus. Largely, the new addition is some of the media center and then some pre-K and K classrooms. When the work's all completed at Gilder, all their existing portables will be able to be removed from the site. You can see there also a photo of the corridor in the new addition. And the doors that you're seeing on the far end of the photo in the upper right-hand quarter are really the front doors that you see in the front entryway. So a lot of good visible line of sight to the new front entryway, and there's an admin located adjacent to that new entry. Also restroom updates, bringing the sinks out into the corridor space to allow for some student supervision. Work at Bryan Middle School has commenced in the last month. This here are a couple photos of the auditorium, repurposing that. If you recall, at Norris and at a couple of other locations, the Edspec decided to infill the auditorium. At this campus, what this allows for is the administration to move, and then the existing administration will be repurposed into additional classroom space, which will result in a reduction of some portables on that campus. In addition, at Bryan Middle School, no photos of any progress on it yet, but of course, they're also in a partnership with Boys and Girls Club for a teen center that will be constructed. So I believe the teen centers, nearly twice the scale of the Florence site, and largely that's due to a gymnasium. So as part of the teen center, the Boys and Girls Club's also providing a gymnasium that's part of their overall build-out at that location. Continuing on at the middle school level, Norris Middle School, 21 classroom addition in total. On the left-hand side, what you're seeing is approximately nine of those classrooms. This addition also has the campus safe area. Inside of the South addition, there's also some small collaborative spaces outside of the classroom for student utilization. And then there's also some teacher planning pods in the addition as well. Moving to the right-hand side, there's a large middle addition, which you can really see predominantly if you're on the north side of the campus. It infills between what the existing academic wing was and the auditorium. There's 12 classrooms in that location, a new media center, and then a new tech and living lab as well. So significant changes from an addition perspective at Norris Middle. And then all of the existing classroom spaces are also being renovated. Not a whole lot of work at Bryan Middle School yet, but the contractor has mobilized, and there's a lot of interesting, three really separate kind of projects in motion at Bryan High School. Not only the auxiliary gym and some of the other renovations related to the bond program, but the campus has also worked with some grant funds to expand their TDL program, which is a significant program for that campus, as well as their urban agricultural program. So we're currently working with the contractor now on actually placing the order for the greenhouse that will be built and assembled as part of the overall renovation at that Burke High School, on the left-hand side, you can see some of the classrooms that have been updated, lighting, flooring, painting, et cetera. Moving our way to the right-hand side or the new addition, auxiliary gym, same scale as the Northwest Auxiliary Gym. However, this location has a basement level, vocal and band, vocal music and instrumental music will move out into the addition. And the lower level of this addition is the new safe area for the campus as well. Since the time these photos were taken, that west elevation's actually been infilled. So the additions, the cube of the addition has been completed. So now they'll really be able to start focusing on the inside fit-out work. The last project that I have for this evening, of course, is JP Lord. And we showed a couple of different progress photos as we've gone, but the campus is a few weeks away from really being 100% completed. May 7th will be student first day, so we're coordinating all the logistics and moving everyone. In particular focus, if you recall, there was a volunteer group that worked with a lot of the kiddos that had polio when JP Lord was originally established for that. So kind of in the center-left, there's a therapy pool, a couple of photos. Maybe a little bit hard to see on the screen, but the right-hand photo, where the water looks a little bit gray, that's actually a large treadmill. And so the pool floor will move up and down to whatever level of water the students needs can accommodate. And then there's also a treadmill on there that can exercise them at different rates as well. And then, like I mentioned, the floor can also be lowered to different depths, and that's reflected in the photo on the left-hand side.
Just to build on that, I just, again, that was a contribution from a citizens group that paid for that pool with the surface that comes up and down. So we'll have some young people at JP Lord's. For some of them, first time in their lives, they'll be in a pool-type facility. So it's, we think, going to be a national attraction. There's very few specialized facilities like this for high-need students, and so it's going to be one of the best in the United States. So it's an awesome partnership with some community members and also with UNMC, which purchased the old JP Lord site, if you're familiar with where it's at currently, right off the UNMC campus. We negotiated with them, I'm going to say, for three years before we were able to get that contract agreed to so that we could build a top-flight, beautiful site. And we already had the land right in front of Norris Middle School. So it is a sight to behold, and I hope that the board all gets a chance to go out and see that. And I just want to thank the board and community again to give one of the best facilities to some of our highest-need students is a statement for our community, for our board. And it's pretty exciting. So I just get excited when I see that. So I have to stop you there.
Yeah. And this is a campus where really every detail of the building was really thought out with the student population in mind. There's, for example, usually the data closets are kind of concealed behind the walls because some of the students here really, they have high need for a lot of stimuli. The data racks are actually behind a large glass panel. So all of the blinking lights and all the kind of moving parts that normally happen behind closed doors are now very, you know, prominent and visible in a corridor off of one of the main corridors in the building. So just a very finite detail of hearing, okay, you know, stimuli and a significant need for the campus, how can we do that in all aspects of the project? So of course, there's a lot of vibrant colors, very unique spaces. As Mr. Evans said, the team that worked on this really tried to look nationally and internationally about, are there some models of this type of facility out there? Really didn't find anything. I think the closest one was something similar in the UK. But it's a very, very unique model, something the district exactly should be very, very proud of. Really close to opening, as I mentioned. I know the principal and the families and folks are just really excited to get in there. So again, May 7th, I believe, is targeted for student first day. And just as kind of a wrapping slide, of course, the bond OPS.org, there's all kinds of Phase 1 information, all the financials, all the schedules, all the CBOC information that Ms. McHale mentions available. And then there's also a Phase 2 tab that the district has created with frequently asked questions and other Phase 2 information that the board has seen or approved, trying to make sure there's clear distinction between both of those. But all that information is available. Been working with district communications on making sure that's readily available. Any questions?
Mrs. Gauding?
I just want to add to the JP Lord conversation. I think when Mr. Ray went back and created our historical perspective document for the board handbook, one of the things that we learned was that when JP Lord was initially created, it was the first of its kind in the United States created by OPS. So I think that speaks volumes to the care that we show for our students. The only item I have, as I ran into, of course, swimming, the Bryan High School coach who shared with me that the blocks at Bryan Middle are very wobbly and unstable. And so I'm hoping that Bryan Middle, Bryan High are able to be taken care of with the work we're currently doing.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sommers. And for those who haven't, would like a tour of JP Lord, Mr. Ray can set that up so we can have a board tour of the facility.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to, let me pull up my thing here, J2C, Community Schools and Family Engagement Lisa Utterback and the team.
It's not 9:30.
(laughing).
Oh, thank you.
And again, I apologize for making you guys wait the last board meeting and then...
That's okay.
But you get to see my beautiful face again, so. I keep going back to that, but nobody gets it.
No, we get it. We're just not responding, Mr. Snow.
Okay, I'll ignore that stop.
Well, good evening, board president, board members, Superintendent Evans. Before I get started, I'd like to take this opportunity and introduce to you the staff from Community Schools and Family Engagement. And as I go through our presentation, you'll understand more about their specific work. And so at this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Patrick Pope. He's our student placement supervisor. Mrs. Danita Webb, she is our mentor. Mrs. Danita Webb, she is our mentoring specialist in collaboration with Midlands Mentoring Partnership. We have Mrs. Crystal Boyd, who is really leading the parent incident reports for the district. We have Dr. Annie McFarland, who is the supervisor in Community Schools and Family Engagement, and you had the privilege of working directly with Mrs. Pacota last week, or two weeks ago. Well, I want to thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight. We want to give you an update, just real general. Before the strategic plan went into effect, the office was Student and Student Community Services, and as you can see, there were over 10 different departments that were under Student and Community Services, ranging from Educational Accountability to Student Placement. And as you can see in the diagram, all of the light blue, kind of the teal, are still the responsibilities that our office oversees with Student and Community Relations, our Student Personnel Services, and Student Placement. We also handle a substantial amount of work on educational accountability when it comes to staffing, working closely with the numbers and Human Resources and Research, and then also we work closely with school safety. After the strategic plan took effect, effective in 2014, 2017, the office was Office of Community School and Family Engagement, and the mission was empowering schools, family, and community to increase student achievement. Effective August 2017, we became Community Schools and Family Engagement, and our mission is to provide voice, advocacy, and resources to really improve student outcomes. And the reason we wanted to focus on student outcomes is because it's all those barriers that really prevent students from excelling in the walls of the school. And so at the start of this year, we really were logistically disjointed because we were all over the third floor, and so we were able, through a generous donor, private donations, to do over $200,000 of renovations in our space. Because I think when people come into your space, it's how they feel when they walk in, and so we offer an opportunity, we will be done here in probably two weeks. We have one of the most beautiful spaces, I think, here at Central Office, and it's important because we have hundreds of stakeholders that come through our doors every month asking for support, and we now have a space where our families can come, students can read books, small kids can read books. We have areas where we can have private sessions with families, fact-finding and those types of things. And so with that, we are really in one location, operating under one mission and vision, and that is providing voice and advocacy to increase and improve those student outcomes. There are really four pillars of support that our office focuses on, and that ranges from attendance to community engagement, due process, and student placement. And I really have to say they're all interrelated. One does not supersede the other because every day when we're working with families, it's these issues that we're dealing with and working with them. And our whole office really focuses on building bridges, collaboration, support, and teamwork. And as we meet with families and we focus on helping them around these pillars of support, it's really about working with each other and utilizing the resources we have to help improve those student outcomes. Just to talk about some high-level work that we do, these are all the responsibilities that we're responsible for in Community Schools and Family Engagement. Obviously, two weeks ago, Mrs. Pacota and myself was able to give a presentation about attendance. And when we talk about attendance, we know that we've had over 8,000 students with 10 or more unexcused absences. We've had 672 county attorney referrals for over 20 days or more. We talked about that last week. But that's the ones that have been sent on to the county attorneys, not the ones that we review and we provide strategic feedback back to the buildings to ensure that they're doing everything that they can to help resolve those issues. We also oversee the code of conduct. We've put together with the support of the Omaha Education Association and administrators around the district, a committee of administrators and teachers and support staff looking at the code of conduct, gathering feedback with regards to if there's any supports or rules and procedures, then guidelines that need to change. We also provide extensive support, and I say, really, Mrs. Boyd provides extensive support with our community academic achievement awards. And as you can see, we have five areas that we support, and that's really doing all the work behind the scenes, working with research and making sure that students qualify, reaching out to parents, printing letters out, the invitations, as well as inviting, sending all the invites out, and then doing all the awards certificates. Community partners, we didn't want to list 10 pages of community partners, these are just some really big partners that we focus on. Collective for Youth this year, Collective for Youth was moved to our office to support all of the after-school programs. And so we do, we haven't done a whole lot of work with them yet, but really working with, to support their needs when they need. Big ones that we've been able to build and sustain this year were Creighton University, the NCAA, the Omaha World-Herald Goodfellows, and then another big one that we work with is United Way of the Midlands. Just providing onsite guidance and support to families and, believe it or not, students when they come in. When we talk about stakeholders, it's not just your parents and your guardians, it's grandparents, it's students, sometimes staff members come to our office, and when we work with them, obviously, if it's a personnel issue, we direct them to Human Resources. And then our office oversees the District Citizens Advisory Committee. Many of you've participated in those committee meetings throughout the year. District hearings, this is something that I've had the opportunity to learn quite a bit about this year, is the ban in bars. One thing that we're really proud of is prior to August 2017, our office used to issue the ban in bars, and then we would turn around and host a hearing if need be. To me, that was absolutely ludicrous to hand a parent a letter saying you're banned and barred, and then two days later, oh, well, let's talk about if we decided to issue a ban and bar. And so now we feel we have a more solid plan in place that a family doesn't feel that they're being jaded, that they can actually come to our office for an appeal and provide the paperwork. And I'll tell you, Marty Torres has done an incredible job. I've sat in on those hearings, and it's like, almost like a courtroom. A recorder starts, and he is non-biased going in. The school side has to provide information in the parent, and I can tell you of the four that we've had this year, three were able to be resolved amicably in saying, what can we do to hit the reset button? Because we know when we ban and bar a family, you're really limiting the opportunities to work together outside of the school, and that's been very, very helpful to us and the families. Another thing that we were able to do with the support of executive council is when it comes to banning bars, prior to, probably about a month ago, when a family, when a individual was banned and barred from school A, they were then banned and barred from all other 95 schools. And to me, as our office was working with these families, more schools were calling and saying, hey, Ms. Utterback, you're limiting my ability to work with this family and punishing us when we didn't have an issue. And so now a ban and bar, when issued, is issued only for that school. So it protects the relationship and the integrity of the family if they have children elsewhere, unless it's a high level that would be deemed by school safety. When we talk about expulsions, we've had 32 that were requested, 17 were withdrew because of the work that we've been able to do behind the scenes. Did it go? There we go. And then also really looking at providing, when we have the expulsions, really the training for the school support liaisons, because they're the ones at the building level ensuring that the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, and students' rights are intact, and the process is protected to ensure that we're making the right decision. When you talk about due process review, there have been 345 expulsions, and 108 of them have been middle and 237 of high school. Our office, once the expulsions happen, we're the kind of the paper trail. But one thing that we've been very intentional about this year is when it comes to the reassignments. We have one individual in the office that really is overseeing those reassignments, and we're working on making sure that we're looking at all the pieces of the puzzle before decisions are made. But it's really about when we do do a reassignment in that process, identifying what the barriers are for that child, because clearly some things have happened in the schools, and then talking about as a team, where would be a great place to reassign the student to set them up for success, and what measures can, supports can we put in place to ensure that whatever happened before does not happen again? And that really takes an extensive amount of work when you're looking at that number, and that doesn't include the number of reassignments that have come to our office that have not been granted, where the student has to remain back at the building. But it doesn't just stop there, it's what can we do to help align some support so when a reassignment does not go through, that we can offer support to ensure that when the student stays there, they're given a fair shake, because we know sometimes circumstances happen. One of the things that Mrs. Boyd will be able to answer some questions to is, I know there was a direct question about incident reporting, and I can tell you, thus far, we've had over 308 actual paper incidences, and that's when a family member or a community member calls in. 275 of them have actually been referred to the building to resolve, and then every day, I mean today, every time I turned around, there were families coming in needing some support. That does not include the phone calls and the walk-ins that we take every single day with people that are in crisis. And I can assure you, and it's an open invitation to come up there anytime, and you will see the committed staff serving families and finding resources to help. It's a revolving door. We also provide family room liaison support. There are family room liaisons in the district. We actually host professional development for them. We bring them together and look at best effective practices. We share resources and allow them. And just one example of that would be is when a family member is new to the school. We worked with family room liaisons earlier this year. When a family is new to the school, we've trained family room liaisons that you should be the anchor, that after the principal, they do their intake meeting, you should be the one that really helps with the administrator, give them a tour of the school, and help set them up for success. Help the family, if they're from outside of the district, fill out the mail application so they don't have to take that paperwork home. And then we also have provided family and school mediations, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. But I have to tell you, we've had 22 actual meeting mediations happening at the building level. I personally have gone out and conducted mediations, and that's where a family feels that I don't trust the school, I feel that I've been wronged, and we need somebody to sit beside me and help me navigate this process. And I'll tell you, in the 22 mediations that we've had, and we've also worked with some of the other executive directors, in most cases, we walk out of there and there's been resolve, and the school and the family is able to hit the reset button because we know that when it gets to the level of mediation, there's a lack of trust or a lack of my own experiences within the walls of the school. And then we manage, obviously, the placement of students. Every year, we host an enrollment fair and the phone bank in August. That's over 11 days. In those 11 days, we just went back and audited our records. We had over 2,000 families served that walked in here to the boardroom. And remember, that's the 11 days before the start of the school year. Those are families that maybe have moved, they do not know where to enroll their kids, and we've taken that burden off the schools to say, come here, let us help you and get you set up so the first day of school, you know where you're ready to go. And then also the phone bank, we want to give credit to IMS for helping us really set up the phone bank this year. Over 5,000, and we have logs, and I know Mr. Evans came up and visited the phone bank this year. I was utterly amazed at the calls coming in, being able to answer those questions. So on that first day of school, kids know where to report, they have their room assignments, and schools are ready to accept those children. And then we also work with the International Exchange Student Program. Our district has up to 24 students. When you compare Millard, they're only required to have three at each high school. We have awards in our office for making sure that we go above and beyond, and we have 24 of those individuals that we place each year. Just some other things that we do is just the overall management and placement of students in Nebraska Option Process. We get over 300 requests each year, and we're able to do 250 that are approved, and those that aren't approved, obviously, are because of capping reports and those stirs that come into effect where there's just not room for those kids to opt in. And then just the whole school selection, I learned a lot this year about the school selection. We just closed out with placing pre-kindergarten and middle school. We did the 6,200, we did the middle to high schools, which was 4,600, and then the mediations related to school placement. We have calls coming in with people that are upset, I didn't get my choice, I want, what are you going to do? Are you going to place me somewhere else? And just saying that, you know what, we've made the selections for this year. As of April 16th, we'll open it back up to go back and look to see if anybody denied their permanent request and then be able to go back and hit the reset button. And that's a very integral part, because if you over-enroll a school, then that affects the staffing reports that we've been working on with Human Resources, and then you have a big issue when you have 55 kids going into two, to maybe one kindergarten classroom, and you only have one kindergarten teacher. So it's a numbers game, but we're very proud of the work, and Mr. Patrick Pope really leads all of that. And then something that we're really, really excited about is this year, we wanted to focus on reentry of our youth coming out of the Douglas County Youth Center and then the other 18 agencies. In years past, when our youth are coming out, our office again receives the paperwork, we work with Student Information Services, and we place the student into the school. Well, we've noticed that when these young people are coming out of a correctional facility, they need more than just a placement. They need an individual at the district level bringing all those resources together, the guardian at light, the county attorney, the probation officer, the social worker, the foster care parent, the parent or the guardian, and the school representative in saying, what were the barriers that you had before? And where is the best placement going to be, and where can we set you up for success? Because if we don't do that, we know that we're probably going to have the same outcome. And so Mr. Jermaine Ballard, who couldn't be here with us tonight, that's been really moving. In fact, we're now getting other agencies saying, when are you going to help us? When are you going to help us? And so that's a work in progress. But when you see a family that's coming out of the DCYC, an individual, and you know that you're helping them have a fresh start somewhere, and the school is aware of maybe some of those barriers, it makes it much more inviting for them to say, hey, welcome, and let's see what we can do to set you up for success. And let me follow up with you with a few days, and we're also looking at with the Midlands Mentoring is how can we assign some mentors to the children so they can also have somebody in the walls of the school to help? And then just the transportation eligibility and assistance, as we're going through placement, we're always getting phone calls about transportation. I know Mr. Smith asked last time we were here about transportation. Well, we can work with transportation within the student assignment plan, but we have to make sure that we don't go out of that, because if we open up the door, then we have to start making exceptions, and then that really negates the work of having a student assignment plan. But we're always working with families through the stir process that if you're placed and it's not working because you chose this school because you wanted to, but you didn't get transportation, then come work with us, and we'll look at what your options are to see how we can help remove those barriers to ensure that your child can get to school each and every day. And then I can tell you, every other duty that comes our way, this committed team is there to help. Families coming in all the time, asking for assistance, and if we don't have the answer, we really work towards that. Something else that this year, in collaboration with Midlands Mentoring Partnership, we were able to write a grant to really bring on one individual to help focus particularly in the North Omaha zip code. And so we have Mrs. Danita Webb that's really focusing on success mentoring, as well as the Village Zone mentoring. And I'll tell you, as she's been working closely with Kami Pacota, as I said, those pillars are constantly intertwining, is the same kids that we're targeting are the kids that have attendance issues. And being able to set up mentors in the school that can check on the student and see how you're doing or have lunch with them is already making a difference in two of the schools that I've had a chance to visit. And so as you can see from the success mentoring, Mrs. Webb is with us about a day and a half, and she's helping Mrs. Pacota on some of those attendance, big district attendance initiatives. So I know you wanted to know previous staffing. Prior to this year, we had all four executive directors oversee the Office of Community School and Family Engagement, and we also had the responsibility of supervising and coaching and leading the 96-plus schools. And this year, through the work of the executive directors and the support of Mr. Evans, I was able to move upstairs, and I felt that if you're going to lead your people, you need to be with them, and so I moved upstairs with our team, and now I'm solely leading the Office of Community Schools. And my school list went from 21 to eight, and then we had one Community School and Family Engagement Administrator, and we repurposed that position to Mrs. Pacota to just solely focus on attendance. And that position did focus on attendance, but the plethora of other responsibilities. In years, the last three years, we had an engagement specialist that was 12 months, and then a bilingual liaison, and then a halftime individual that was all three of those individuals really focused on. really focused on those parent referrals. And this year, we're finally up to one hundred percent. We had some staffing hiccups and we now have three individuals, which is obviously Mrs. Crystal Boyd. I was able to take the previous supervisors, co-supervisors position and repurpose it to get more bang for the buck or juice for the squeeze with regards to high quality people being able to serve. And we've now added a engagement, bilingual engagement specialist that also is bilingual and she's been a wealth of support for our office in working with our families, particularly in the community side with the incidents instead of having to run upstairs to the fourth floor and find an interpreter. And they've been very supportive too in the ESL department when there's other language barriers that we have. We used to have two co-supervisors. We now have one supervisor, which is Dr. Annie McFarland. And the other position I was able to look at and work with budget and HR and repurpose to like I said, get more high-quality community engagement specialists opposed to the one and a half that we had last year. And then this year, we have the mentoring specialist and like I said, that's a position that is really housed with Midlands Mentoring, but really spends about a day and a half to two days a week with us and she's now working with Mrs. Pacota to help on the big attendance initiatives that we need because that impacts her work as well. And then we have, currently, we have our student placement supervisor, Mr. Pope, and then three student placement administrators, like I said, that handle all that work with the STIRS. We've been without one individual, a twelve-month, who's been out on medical leave, I believe, since early August. And so we are thankful that HR provided some hourly support from a retiree that knows the work and has connections with the school. So that's been an extra hand in the office. And then we have two place ten-month administrators and one has been put on hold at this time due to where we're at with budget because we wouldn't want to have to fill a position if down the line. And so that's really our staff for this year. Something that I also want to talk about is we really wanted to focus on the parent incident reporting. As you can see from this diagram, it's circular in motion because it's never-ending and it's really about connecting all the pieces. And so when we talk about stakeholders, it's really your parents, your guardians, your community members, your students and sometimes staff members. And when we talk about administrators, that's the principal, the assistant, the school support liaison at the building level or the dean of students. Basically what happens is a stakeholder will contact our office, either via phone or there'll be a walk-in. At that time, our first thing is really to ask some probing questions and I want to thank the principals that are watching tonight because they have been very, in SSLs, they have been very instrumental in giving feedback and saying, you're sending me an incident report without, I didn't even know that there was an issue. And so what we have been doing when we're working with families, an example, a call came in last week, I'm really upset that my student's getting an F. Okay, have you had the opportunity to talk to the teacher? No, I don't want to talk to the teacher. Well, we'd really like you to work with the building leadership who supervises. That's a slam dunk. You send an email to the principal to follow up with the family. In many other cases, we do a lot of listening and ask probing questions and if necessary, an email will be to notify the principal, the hey, or SSL to note, to reach out to the family member or stakeholder and set up a meeting to have dialogue to try to figure out what's going on. And at other levels, as I said, three hundred and seven of them, we have to generate an incident report because it's at that level where we need to send an actual paper trail that will allow us to be able to look at the work and see how the process is resolved. After we do that and it goes back to the building level, the school administrator or administrators will then work with the family to try to find resolve. In many cases, the family doesn't want to meet without us as a representative or we have to go in and mediate because the meeting that they had. And so that's where myself, we've had everyone in our office, we all do whatever's necessary. We have clearly defined duties, but we all pitch in and then the mediation support takes place. One thing that we require is the incident report is complete, so then it's shipped back to our office and it's housed for documentation. So then if the family ever calls back in and says, no, we have documentation of that. If it's an email, we've trained our school leaders to update any information that they've had in the parent contact log. So then when they call back, the student contact log, so then we can go back and have that as a reference point because documentation is critical. And I, the principals have really appreciated being able to give the heads up to say, hey, I want to be able to work with this family first. And so we're training our community and providing supports to that. Not everybody always has to come here, but we're going to be your advocate if you need us, but we really want to build that bridge and maintain that relationship at the building level. And so that's where we come in to offer the support that's necessary. And you know, I'd just like to end by saying that this is one of the most committed group of individuals that I've ever had the privilege of working with. All the duties that you were able to hear tonight are on the shoulders of seventeen individuals and I always say, you know, Dr. Seuss says it best, unless someone like them cares a whole awful lot, nothing gets done. And so every day, they're striving to do better, to do whatever it takes to help our families and they're a committed group of people and so we're just honored to be here tonight.
Thank you so much, Lisa and your staff for all the work that you guys do and I, as a constituent, as a community member and as a board member, I do see a difference in that department and your guys' department, just at the events I've attended, just hearing from some of my constituents in my district. I will open it up for any questions or comments from my colleagues or I can start off first? Oh, man, I'll start off first. So I have a quick question on slide five, reassignments. Could you explain the returns of students that return back to those schools and what is the process of that?
Yes, and I'll ask Dr. McFarland to come up as well. When a reassignment comes to our office, it's because the school leadership team feels that they're following the code of conduct. The school has felt that they have put all necessary measures in place to resolve the issue and they feel that a reassignment is warranted according to the code of conduct. Dr. McFarland directly supervises Dick Lohmeyer and I'll let her add in, but I've been able to watch that process, how it plays out and we look at all the pieces of the puzzle and determine, has the school done enough? Have they not? And if you do not provide the evidence that you have, then the student will remain back at the school. And we also work with the school to ensure that when we're putting a student back, we want to make sure that we're setting the student up for success as well. Did I miss anything?
Great and thank you. We actually have a reassignment committee that is made up of some building leadership as well as some central staff from special education, also our health office, as well as deans of students and school counseling. So really taking a comprehensive look at the student and also at the situation. We want to build success for the student as well as the school, whether the student is returning to the school or whether they're going to a different school. So taking a look at what are the resources that we have available within the district and also within the Omaha community, taking a look at the student record, at their CUME folder. If we're talking about a high school student, looking back into elementary and seeing, are there things that have occurred in this child's life that might be impacting their behavior or their situation at the time? Are there other resources that can be put in place? So sometimes it is taking a look at where the student is currently and saying, for example, if it's a special education student, have we really exhausted all of the resources that we have available according to the IEP? If it's a regular education student, are there other resources within our community? Is there community counseling, connections, some of those things that can be put in place to help the student? Oftentimes, we see that some of the things that are going on in the student's life are things that are happening outside of school. So really looking at a collaborative approach and then recommending that the student go back and giving the school some interventions that they can try at that level. At the same time, if the student is moving on to another placement, what can we do differently in that next placement to build success for that student so that it's not just a student going to a new school and a principal saying, well, here's our code of conduct, this is a new start for you, however, we know what happened before. We really want to build a relationship for that school. So telling the school what has been tried before, what has worked, what are some other things they may try and how they can really welcome that student into that environment.
So what that, is the student, so let's say student A is reassigned to a different school, your office says they should go back, does that student go back to that class or do they go to a different class?
Now, that depends on the situation. Do we have an opportunity where maybe the conflict really originated in the class with another student, with a peer? Is it just that the relationship with that teacher or that particular class? What are the other resources that can be put in place at that building level? If it's a student who is an elementary student, we don't have very many, but some, do we have an opportunity to put them in a different classroom and put these resources in place, but still not take them out of that school environment where they have their family, I mean, where they have their friends, their peer supports, the teachers, whoever their mentors are within the building? We really look at the least impactive or restrictive opportunity for that student so that we can continue on the successes that they're having. But there are some situations where yes, a change of school environment is what is best in that situation. And it's on that slide, you saw how many that we've had come forward and when it's returned, it's because we have gone back to that school because we believe that that is in the best interest. And again, it is a team decision and the school does come and present their side. So it's not just that they're providing us with paperwork, they're actually there to address questions by our committee.
Thank you.
And I would also say having other school leaders, those peers at the table making decisions really provides voice and input.
So I have another question now. So what, does your office supervise, there's no current office in OPS, if I'm correct, that supervises or helps manages or works with schools with the PTO and PTAs? Or is that under your office as well? I just didn't see it.
Well, that's very interesting. Many of the PTOs and PTAs are at the school level and they're private entities and so per your request, we're putting together the list, but to be quite honest, we have not done anything in the last several years with the PTO and PTA groups.
And the reason why is, I mean, you guys talk about family and community engagement and I attended Skinner and their PTO is being held up by the teachers and I'm sure that happens at many schools, but how do we get those parents engaged to kind of take over that organization, to kind of be supporters and understand what the school's going through as well as championing the work that they're doing? So.
That is something that we could definitely look at as we look at our current responsibilities, possibly hosting workshops for school, individuals that would be interested, what it would entail. We could reach out to some of the schools that are successfully doing that and offer some sessions on how to build capacity around PTA, PTOs.
I think that would be amazing, just building the schools up. Mr. Proman?
Yes. I'm wondering if restorative justice practices are being implemented in OPS and if not, if maybe the framework or the groundwork is being laid to do that. That's something I heard a lot about over the weekend. It's something that's being talked about more and more around the country and I'm just curious where the district is at and how that may.
We were just talking about this the other day.
Be implemented.
Yep.
Well, actually, I want to thank you because I think you had shared with Mr. Ray a webinar series on restorative justice practices and so I did actually participate in two of them with the similar viewpoint of trying to find alternatives to suspension and really looking at how, and in fact, when I described our reassignment team, how can we take that a step further and really encourage our buildings at the building level? We just scratched the surface with starting to look around at what are the best models out there as far as restorative practices, but yes, that's what we think will really build success for students to keep them in their school environment. So.
Is there anything that we as a board can do to support that or just keep the conversation going or how would you suggest that we move things forward?
Well, you know, I would say as we're looking at some of those effective national practices, many things are happening, they're just site-based in silos. And so as we're working with the ninety different, ninety-plus schools and we're going through the reassignments, we're also learning about what's been effective and what's not. The issue is in order to sustain success from a systems approach, it has to be a system initiative. And so some of the things where, you know, with our attendance initiatives that we've talked about, alternatives to suspension, that we're actually meeting this Thursday to finalize the code of conduct and that really impacts whether a student, you know, commits this offense and what the action is. And so we're just continuing to move the needle in that area and we do have some attendance suggestions that we're going to be bringing to the committee that we think will help with keeping kids at school and then working with our school support liaisons on alternatives to suspensions. I have to be honest, it really boils down to resources and staffing when you look at having in-school suspension rooms. We have our PAC rooms, our Positive Action Centers, but as people here tonight, those are our paraprofessionals that are not, I don't want to misspeak, but they, they're not, most of them are not individuals that have college education degrees and so they're relying on the expertise of the building principals and we don't just want to house kids in those rooms. Or when we look at our middle school and high school, our secondary, our secondary, you know, the in-school suspension rooms, providing reteaching to the kids because unless we reteach a skill, we're going to get the same outcome. And so making sure when we're working with our school support liaisons and they're working with kids, that they're not just, consequences are not just punitive, it's about teaching and reteaching and modeling that. And we do that all the time with our school support liaison trainings. We do it when we're working with our administrators and we're getting kids re-entered back into school to ensure that we, in order to get a different outcome, you have to have a different practice.
And I think my final question is, and maybe there's just no answer to this, but how much space is needed for a middle school alternative program? I mean, from what I understand, next year, it will be housed in a new location. Right now, there's about three dozen students there. Just baseline, I have no idea what the district thinks an appropriate number should be, whether that's eighty, one hundred, three hundred, five hundred. I, you know, I just don't know and so it's hard to make a framework of policy when, without that knowledge.
Right, and I would say that I could get you the answer to that question, Mrs. Kohn and Superintendent Evans have been working closely with the Secondary Success Center. Our office does not create programs, we do not create alternative placements, we place students in the best placement for them to be successful. And I know that there's been some talk, Mr. Evans, would you like to?
Yeah, we've had ongoing conversations, two years, Ms. Kohn, something like that. And I don't know, depending on what Ben needs, whether you have to come up or not, but I know we do have a lot of information on that because it's been a lengthy endeavor with lots of staff involved and.
And I don't mean to put her on the spot, that's just something moving forward in the weeks and months ahead.
Yeah, it's a conversation. In fact, it's a big conversation with even some implications on this budget advisory committee too, that I think the board needs to be aware of too. So there's kind of an ongoing piece that needs to come in front of the board very soon.
Thank you. And I would just say to that too, Mr. Evans is spot on, when I've been sitting in on reassignments, I've been asking the question, if you have fifty kids that qualify by the criteria to be reassigned and we only have certain slots at this particular school, then we know we reassign them back to another middle school. And so really looking at the needs of the students and Mrs. Kohn has direct numbers, I don't know.
Just to let you know about the numbers this year, I would tell you that no student has been denied this year if they met all the criteria. We've not sent anyone back, we've not denied anyone entrance. If they've met the criteria, then they've been admitted to the program. We currently have about thirty-two students in the program.
Thank you, Mr. Proman. Mrs. Gotti?
I'll just toss out one item on the conversation of PTAs that I think you had ten years ago, which now seems like a really long time ago when I was a PTA president. There actually was a district-wide PTA organization. We actually met upstairs in the cafeteria on a regular basis and we worked very closely with the state PTA organization. Now, I know a lot of PTAs have left, the state PTA and our PTOs now, but we had a person who was a PTA president who'd been for years. We got together, we did roundtable discussions, we covered various topics. So it was actually a very productive opportunity for individuals to interact across the district and to get ideas that might spur something in their own schools. So it was a very good organization and I can remember attending meetings in the cafeteria.
Do you know by chance what department hosted those meetings?
You know, I think it was more independent.
Student Community Services.
Yeah, so anyway, I'm just sharing with you that it did exist a number of years back and it was helpful and fun.
Okay, and I would go back and look and I'm sure that as I've been hitting the ground with this new work, looking more and more, work is coming to fruition that used to be under Student and Community Services and so that's something that we'll definitely take a look at. I will mention that, you know, Mrs. Boyd and two other people and myself have been handling those parent incidences in DCAC, but we know that engaged parents at the school level help improve those outcomes, so we will certainly take a look at that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Board for received reports. We do have a report from class size from Mr. Evans and Scott Schmidt-Bonnie.
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, Connie Kanoki, and Legal Counsel, negotiations, legal advice, and pending litigation.
We have a motion by Dr. Holman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cassidy. Roll call, please. Holman?
Aye.
Sorry, Pearlman?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Gotti?
Aye.
Six, aye.
Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, Connie Kanoki, and Legal Counsel, negotiations, legal advice, and pending litigation. Let the record reflect, the board went into closed session at 9:01.